Give us just a minute, we're trying to. All right, I'd like to call this November 5th meeting of regular Greenville County Council meeting to order, and I'd like to call on Chairman Curvin to offer the invocation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, let us pray if you will. Dear Heavenly Father, we are appreciative of all the benefits and blessings that you've bestowed upon the citizens of Greenville County. We're mindful of our responsibilities and duties as elected public officials to conduct this business in an orderly manner tonight and try to arrive at consensus or decisions in the best interest to the citizens that our council members represent. We are mindful of the recent storm that's come through the county and all the suffering that that brought with us and property damage, and especially for our neighbors in North Carolina, and we appreciate and give thanks for your courage and support that we've gotten in recovering from that storm there. And dear Lord, we ask forgiveness for our transgressions and our sins, and we ask that we be given a chance to do better and mend our ways, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we know what? We don't have the list of people that want to speak. Sorry, we're looking, we had a bunch of people that signed up to speak, and we're looking for our clerk who has the list of speakers, so we're going to do the approval of minutes, and if we don't have a clerk in here, we may stand at ease for just a minute. So the next item on the agenda is item number four, approval of minutes from the October 15th meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jufalakis.
I got a correction on those meeting minutes, please.
Okay.
On item six, it says that under appearances, it says Ms. Pazin did not speak on Metro Sewer Sub District, she spoke on Fairmont, so I'd just like the meeting minutes to reflect that. And also, she asked that her meeting minutes be included, her notes be included in the meeting minutes, and I'd like to ask that they be included in the meeting minutes.
Okay, well, first of all, as I recall, and I don't have the minutes in front of me, she signed up to speak on Metro, that's what was on the sheet, so I don't think that that can be changed. That's what she signed up for.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to say that, see, I believe she signed up for two, for Metro, and she signed up for Fairmont. She was speaking on Fairmont, she was removed from here, and she didn't, was not able to speak on Metro, and she also sent the council an email, Mr. Chairman, saying what she wanted to speak on regarding Metro. So I think, I guess we need to listen to the recording, but to the, she was speaking on Fairmont that night.
Okay, but I'm going to reiterate that on the sign-up sheet that we had, when she was called to speak, what was written on this section that she was speaking on was Metro, and so I can't change that, that's how she signed up, that's part of the public record, and so.
I would like to be recognized for the public record, sir.
Ma'am.
Because it is inaccurate.
Ma'am.
Your recollection is inaccurate, sir. And that's all I will say, when I signed up and spoke.
Ma'am. You're out of order.
Yes, I am, but I think the public record should reflect what is accurate, not your recollection, what is accurate.
Ma'am, you're out of order.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm just telling you what was on the sign-up sheet, that's not a recollection, I saw it, it was right in front of me, and that's what led to what happened last, two weeks ago, so if you want to make a motion, I'm going to recommend that we not pass that motion. But if you want to make a motion, you're free to do that.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we.
Go down there.
That we change on the meeting minutes, under six, where you've got Ms. Pazin agree, appeared regarding 11-6 to speak on Metro Sewer Sub District, that she did not, she was speaking on Metro, she was speaking on Fairmont, and she signed up to speak on Fairmont, and she also signed up to speak on Metro, both items.
Okay, that's a long-winded motion, all those in favor of approving that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The noes have it. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We now have, come to no proclamations or special recognition, we're now on the appearances on current agenda items. We have three speakers that have signed up, and the first one is Ruthie Cooley, Chapman Grove Road, Pelzer. If you'll give us your name and address for the record, and.
Good evening, and thank you all very much for recognizing me. My name for the record is Ruthie Churiton Cooley. I'm a resident of Charlotte, North Carolina, so my official address is 107-27-Tom Short Road, Charlotte, North Carolina. I'm here as a property owner of 240 Chapman Grove Road, Pelzer, South Carolina, so I have property here, and I specifically am here to address the ordinance of the sale of Chapman Grove Road, Greenville County's sale of Chapman Grove Road property, which is ordinance W. So I wasn't expecting to be the first one, but thank you very much. So what I'm asking in the council, and I've spoken with the attorney's office, county attorney, my brother Sam Churiton has spoken with multiple people within the county, and what we're asking is for consideration of this ordinance, to not approve the ordinance until we can work with the county for a different resolution. This particular property, 5.3 acres, came into possession of the county through a deed that was signed on October 12th, 1974, between the Chapman Grove Community, the Chapman Grove Community Club and the Greenville County Recreation Commission. The land was originally to be used for parks and recreation, it's very clear that it's no longer needed for that, but what we're asking is before that land is sold, that we work with the county to establish title, to determine if the community could be designated as the assignees, as the original deed required, and that this land, that there's an agreement between the county and the community, and the original owners, of which we're representing John H. Chapman's descendants, so that we can work together to get this property resolved, not sold to someone with no history or history in that community, but really is used for the community itself. So what are we asking, that you're not approved at this, tonight, and that we be able to work with the county to come to a joint resolution. Mr. Radley, this is right across the street from the John H. Chapman property that we're working on.
Yes, ma'am, I'm very much aware.
Absolutely, so I'm here, I just want you to know how passionate we are about, not so much for ourselves, but for the community itself. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Ms. Diane Vreeland? If you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
Diane Vreeland, on behalf of Greenville County Republican Women, 413 Heather Falls Lane, Simpsonville. I'm talking about the Philos. I must admit that I am surprised we are all here tonight, as it is election day, and I am sure there are many residents that could not attend due to voting and/or working the polls. To boot, you have managed to produce a 13-page agenda chock-full of interesting items. I cannot help but feel that you are rushing to get these agenda items through before the end of the year, when four of you will no longer be here. I would like to address 11 Philo items on the agenda, they are as follows for the record: CHQ1, CHQ2, CHQ4, CHQ5, CHQ6, Project Strong, Project Blackbird, Project Bolt, Project Double Eagle 1, Project Double Eagle 2, and last but not least, Project Constellation. Wow, that's an impressive list. As I have stated before, Philos can serve a positive impact, as one did with BMW, but that was rare. Taking into consideration the impact of bringing more industry here, as the increase in traffic, while not knowing at this point if the referendum is passing, impact to infrastructure, impact to our school system, and a host of other considerations, I truly do not understand why you continue to cut these deals, as shifting the tax burden onto citizens from business is not looking out for the best interests of individual taxpayers. In the summer, after speaking to you regarding Philos, Max Stewart, President and CEO of the GADC, approached me and told me he was planning to do a presentation on Philos for community members to come, listen, and ask questions, in an effort to validate the need for approving them. To date, I am unaware of such presentation. Bottom line, there is a lack of public trust out there, I, along with the people here in the audience and those watching at home, are your constituents and you represent us. I have yet to see an effort to explain or educate the public about the cost-effectiveness of Philos. We state our concerns, ask our questions, make speeches, to no avail, as the concerns are not addressed and the questions are never answered. I can only speak for myself, but it is discouraging at best, as you continue to go about your business with no regard for the people you represent. I would like to hand a copy of my statement to the clerk, so it is part of the public record, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Vreeland.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to make an announcement based on that, Max is scheduled to speak at Public Communications Forum this upcoming Tuesday, at our regular scheduled Public Communications Forum, just for everybody's knowledge, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Ms. Audrey Passan, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Audrey Passan, 136 Old Altamont Ridge Road, Greenville, I live on Paris Mountain. I'm going to discuss Philos in a general way. To first point out that the number of Philos on tonight's agenda are 11, together with seven inducements. I looked at the last five years of election nights to see how many Philos and inducements were issued in prior years, and this year is a real exception. In 2020, there were four Philos, one inducement. In 2021, five Philos, one inducement. 2022, eight Philos, three inducements. 2023, five Philos, no inducements. My favorite Philo was sticky, yours, Mr. Tripp, in 2021. It makes me wonder what word should be attached to sticky, because these things are sticky, and I don't think they mean sticky toffee, I think they mean they stick to the county like glue. And so I ask you, what kind of review have you all gone through to propose tonight, 11 Philos? Now, we have a pretty good audience here, but a lot of the public who might not like this is not in attendance to speak about it. I question why we have these Philos and no transparency about the benefit they produce. South Carolina has a statute, maybe people don't know about it, Section 30-4-55, it requires that disclosure be made after you've made these deals, to tell us, tell the public what the fiscal impact of this offer was, what was the benefit that the county got. I will tell you that I signed up to speak on CHQ2. There are five such Philos for that entity, South Point. It seems to me it's a real estate investment. I don't see how that brings anything positive to the county in terms of the kind of industry and growth that we seek. I think it's, looks like a deal that shouldn't be made, and so I'm raising for the public's enlightenment, and to suggest to the public, they ask serious questions about what goes on with these Philos, and I associate myself with Ms. Vreeland's comments. I'll say one last thing on the minutes, sir. You are incorrect, I signed up for two matters, and you chose not to show me under Fairmont. I insist you show me under Fairmont, because I did speak on Fairmont, I never had a chance to speak on the sewer expansion matter, which I'll speak on tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that is all the appearances on items on the current agenda. We'll move now to public hearings, item number seven, and the first one is Slater Marietta Fire District Geo Bonds, Chairman Curvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance finding that the Slater Marietta Fire District may issue not exceeding $1,275,000 of general obligations bonds to authorize the Board of Fire Control of the Slater Marietta Fire District, South Carolina, to issue such bonds and to provide for the publication of the notice of the sale, finding, and authorization. Has anyone signed up to speak in this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curvin, we have no one signed up for this public hearing.
In that case, I declare this public hearing closed.
Right, the next item is Lake Cunningham Fire District Geo Bonds.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance finding that the Lake Cunningham Fire District may issue not exceeding $9 million of general obligation bonds to authorize the Board of Fire Control of the Lake Cunningham Fire District, South Carolina, to issue such bonds and to provide for the publication of notice of the said finding and authorization. Has anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curvin, we have no one signed up for this public hearing.
I declare this public hearing closed.
All right, next item, 7C, sale of county-owned properties, 6 Bailey Mill Road, Travelers Rest, Chairman Curvin.
Yes, sir, this public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to authorize the sale of a county-owned 1.995-acre parcel of real property located at 6 Bailey Mill Road, Travelers Rest, at the corner of Highway 414 and Bailey Mill Road, and to authorize the Chairman of County Council and the County Administrator to execute appropriate deeds and agreements related there, too. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curvin, we have no one signed up for this public hearing.
I declare this public hearing closed.
All right, the next one is the adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance in Greenville County, Chairman Dr. Pham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to adopt the Greenville County Unified Development Ordinance. Anyone sign up to speak?
A number of speakers.
First speaker is, we'll do the, in favors first, we'll start with Ms. Sylvia Palmer. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Sylvia Palmer, and I live at 5 Roosevelt Avenue in the city of Greenville, but I do have family members who live in the county in the areas of the excessive development. I'm a retired school teacher with the Greenville County School System, and back when I taught, we were required to have lesson plans, to list the things that we wanted to make sure we covered, and also to have some temporary backup plans in case things don't go well. And as I read the Unified Development Ordinance, I see a lot of things that are indicated in there that suggest to me that the ordinance is headed in the right direction to put somewhat management of the massive development that is going on in the county of Greenville as we speak. Growth needs to be managed, just like our students needed to be managed in the classroom with specific items that we needed to teach them. The Unified Development Ordinance has been developed over the past four years, and there are a lot of things that are taking place with the development that may not be looked at until a crisis occurs, so I'm suggesting, and this is why I'm in approval for the UDO, that the ordinance itself, as it's stated, has the ability to be corrected in the future when other things come up that were unforeseen, especially in the category of problems. So I'm using this opportunity to speak to you and ask you to vote to pass the Unified Development Ordinance, and I thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Letitia Short, hope I got that right?
Yeah, you got it right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Letitia Short, and I reside at 41 Lakewood Drive in Greenville on beautiful Saluda Lake. I am speaking tonight on behalf of Save Our Saluda, a local nonprofit watershed organization that works to protect and restore the Upper Saluda Watershed, which includes approximately 62% of the land area in Greenville County. Our organization has closely followed and been engaged in the development of the UDO for several years. We have attended community meetings and council workshops, and have provided comments and input to staff and council on various development-related issues, most notably repairing buffer and open space protection, which affect our rivers, lakes, and downstream drinking water supplies. I urge you to vote yes on the UDO for the following reasons. The UDO implements the comprehensive plan and helps to focus growth in a fiscally and environmentally responsible way that balances demands of the county. The UDO codifies ordinances to provide consistency and clarity and eliminate subjectivity and contradictions with overlapping regulations. The UDO includes provisions for repair and buffer protection for all classes of streams that are important for building watershed resiliency, preventing loss of land, lessening the impact from flooding, and protecting water quality. And the UDO includes provisions for tree canopy and open space protection. While not perfect, the UDO is a positive step in the right direction to help streamline zoning and development regulations, realize efficiencies, and protect important environmental assets as we grow, and it should serve as a living document, subject to adjustments and improvements going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Short. Next speaker, John Slipkey.
Good evening, my name is John Slipkey, I reside at 43 Tindall Avenue in Greenville. I've lived in Greenville County since 1997. I'm here this evening to speak in favor of the adoption of the new Unified Development Ordinance. I've closely followed the development of the UDO since the project kickoff in June of 2020, and have long considered the adoption of the UDO as the county's top legislative priority. We must remember that the UDO project was initiated following the unanimous adoption of the county's comprehensive plan in 2019. That plan was developed with significant public and community engagement. The UDO reflects the county's need to undertake and complete a comprehensive revision of its zoning ordinance and land development regulations to guide future development. The project's overarching purposes are to implement the county's comprehensive plan and bring its zoning and development regulations into the 21st century. The UDO, as proposed, does not set policy for growth, nor does it establish countywide zoning. Most of the county's current development-related regulations are carried forward without substantive changes. Where the UDO proposes changes, they are intended to implement the comprehensive plan, implement recommendations from the zoning code and land development regulations assessment, modernize regulations, correct inconsistencies, and implement best practices. The UDO also recognizes the differences in development and growth potential in the rural, suburban, and more urban areas of the county. The UDO is the product of over four years of extensive staff work, public engagement, and professional expertise. There have been numerous workshops, public meetings, and reviews with county council. The UDO is comprehensive and accomplishes many of the project's original goals and priorities. It is not a perfect product, but it does provide a more comprehensive and modernized framework to guide land development. Adoption of the UDO does not mean the end of further policy development or refinement. The UDO is, and will continue to be, a living document. Future modifications can be implemented as needed. After four years, the time has come for county council to finally adopt the long-awaited UDO. I strongly urge county council's adoption of the proposed UDO. Thank you.
Next speaker is David Knight.
Good evening, my name is Alden Knight, I'm the Executive Director of Upstate Forever at 507 Pettigrew Street in Greenville. On behalf of Upstate Forever, I'd like to express our full support of the UDO and urge you to vote yes to send it to third reading. We'd also like to thank council and county staff for the more than four years of work which have brought us to where we are today. We've heard opponents express frustration with the UDO, they say it has been fast-tracked, they think it contains errors, or they say it doesn't go far enough to protect rural and unzoned areas. I hear those comments, but I cannot emphasize enough, it's far better than what we have now. We cannot let perfection be the enemy of good here. We need to take this positive step now, knowing that corrections and improvements can be made in the future if and as needed. The ordinance has not been fast-tracked. Over the last few years, there have been numerous public workshops and community engagement opportunities on key components of the UDO. Our staff have been engaged in the process since the start. We appreciate that our feedback has been listened to and, in many cases, acted upon. The UDA, the UDO may not be perfect in its present state, but current regulations guiding development are antiquated and rife with inconsistencies, which has led to confusion, frustration, and lawsuits. The UDO addresses this by modernizing regulations, resolving discrepancies, and making it a far better framework to manage the explosive growth in Greenville County. Finally, as a conservation organization with water quality and land protection as our mission, we always want to see stronger protections for sensitive natural areas. One of the most effective tools for providing such protections is zoning, which unfortunately is not always welcomed in the county's rural areas. We are pleased to see the following protections included in the UDO: protections for waterways, stronger protections for tree canopy, a new approach to green space preservation with an intent to create more meaningful access to the outdoors in new developments, revamped parking requirements, which are good for waterways, stronger connectivity and sidewalk requirements which expand mobility options and help reduce congestion and emissions, and expanded opportunities for a range of housing options and incentives for affordable housing in urban areas which will help reduce sprawl. In closing, adoption of the UDO is not the end game, but it is an essential milestone to better balance growth with other community priorities. Thank you for your consideration of these comments, your vote to adopt the UDO, and for your service to Greenville County. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Next speaker is Anes Mars.
Good evening, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, my address is 4 Queen Alley, Greenville, South Carolina, and I am here to speak in favor of the UDO. As a resident of the city of Greenville in Greenville County, I'm here this evening to encourage, to ask all county council members to vote in favor of this UDO. This UDO gives an opportunity for Greenville County to move forward in its efforts to help provide affordable housing and control the high rate of growth that continues to happen. Without the UDO, we will continue to see our county become another Atlanta with the possibility of continued sprawl and more people unable to rent or purchase a home. For example, I have a young lady at my church, 24-years-old, who was in a one-bedroom apartment paying $1,430 a month. She says, "Well, if I can pay this, then I can buy a house." She got approved for a house, however, she's been unable to find a home within that price range. Therefore, let us give more options to landowners, such as allowing them the ability to build ADUs in residential areas, and thus expanding available housing to help meet the needs of the, our residents. I hope with passing of this UDO and continued review of it, this living document, this council can help make Greenville County a place that many can call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mars. Next, we have Robert Hanley.
Good evening, Robert Hanley, I live at 225 Tindall Avenue.
Robert Hanley, I live at two-two-five Tindal Avenue, and I'm here representing Friends of the Reedy River. I also serve as the Greenville County Soil and Water Conservation District Commissioner and on the Saluda River Basin Council. Friends of the Reedy River is dedicated to actions that protect our watershed and benefit the residents of Greenville County, and we urge county council to vote yes and adopt the UDO. While not perfect, the UDO is an improvement from the existing hodgepodge of regulations and inconsistencies. The UDO works to eliminate these inconsistencies and contradictions and better aligns development with the goals of Plan Greenville County, the two thousand twenty comprehensive plan. Importantly, the UDO incorporates riparian buffers, the text amendment passed earlier this year to solidify enhanced buffer protections for our waterways, lot-size standards for subdivisions in unsuared areas of the county, requirements to identify both primary and secondary septic tank locations, and requiring developers to consult with sewer districts before submitting a plan all serve to protect our watershed. The UDO improves open space requirements, enhances tree protections, encourages protection of sensitive habitats, and includes improved density requirements related to lot sizes. All of these improvements impact the health of the Reedy River watershed and the Saluda River Basin, and the quality of life of Greenville County's residents. The UDO should be adopted. As a living document, the UDO can and should be amended as appropriate. It has taken four years and countless hours of deliberation and negotiation to get to this point, but the result is a comprehensive framework that will align new development with the county's comprehensive plan, enhance environmental protections, and better direct how Greenville County will continue to accommodate its growth. In closing, as you consider your vote on the UDO, ask yourself, will the UDO benefit the residents who you represent? Friends of the Reedy River believes that answer is yes and asks for your vote to adopt the UDO. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next is Erin Predmore.
Good evening. I'm Erin Predmore. I live at two hundred Delrose in Taylors. I'm also the chair of Impact Greenville, and I'm here speaking on the behalf of that group tonight. We're a group of nonprofits serving Greenville County residents, and we believe that all benefit, that we will all benefit from working together at the crossroads of land policy, affordable housing, and mobility. We are in favor of the UDO. The current development ordinances are like an old pair of running shoes. We appreciate the journey we've been on with them, but we still think they're pretty comfortable. But we also know it's time to get a new pair when the ones we have are falling apart and no longer give us the help we need in our step. In the same way, the old development ordinances are no longer able to protect Greenville County the way that our incredible growth requires. The old ordinances mean a developer can do mass grading, design a development without community input, barely preserve open space, just build right on top of each other. The old ordinances barely require buffers or screening between uses, and the protection of our beautiful forests, creeks, and lakes are a joke. It's time for an updated ordinance. This UDO, the work of four years of community meetings, public drafts, and comment periods, requires pre-submitting community meetings, meaningful open space requirements, external sidewalks, limits on mass grading, which we all hate, all that red mud, no trees. Clearer language and terminology is across the board throughout the UDO. It's much easier to read than the old ordinances, and there are also design guidelines for commercial buildings and better buffers and screenings between different uses and better environmental protections. Your yes vote tonight means you want to protect Greenville. We cannot legally keep people from moving here. They are coming. So please put the UDO in place so that we can begin to shape the future of Greenville in a way that keeps the beautiful parts that we love and helps us manage the influx of residents. And finally, I'll leave you with this thought. This process began with the previous council, before some of y'all were elected. It will hopefully be passed by this council, and then, like every other ordinance in our county, we'll fall to future councils to monitor it, adjust as needy, as needed, and ensure that the outcomes are what we want for Greenville County. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mark O'Rourke.
Good evening. My name is Mark O'Rourke. I live at four zero eight McDaniel Avenue. I'm speaking in favor of the UDO. After the economic crisis of two thousand eight, new housing construction decreased dramatically locally and across the U.S. Today, after the pandemic, houses are in short supply and more expensive. Mortgages are more expensive. Rentals are in short supply and more expensive. Living costs and construction costs have increased. The reality for our children and grandchildren is that affording to buy a house or finding a place to rent is much more difficult than it was just a few years ago. Our choice is not between a plan and no plan. The choice for UDO is a choice for, one, a smart set of regulations rather than complex and sometimes contradictory regulations; two, a single document that articulates the intent of the planning commission; three, a clear guide that allows the public to understand the development plan and to know what to expect; and four, consistent processes and procedures that allow property owners to know the regulations and to make decisions regarding their property with confidence. Timely adoption of this UDO is urgent. Delay does not serve the interests of the planning commission, the public, or property owners. The future is upon us now. The shortage and unaffordability of housing is growing more severe. The need to protect floodplains, floodways, and ecologically sensitive areas is increasing rapidly. Our historic and cultural resources need protection. Infill needs are great. The Greenville Homeless Alliance is a founding member of Impact Greenville. We have and will continue to advocate for ways to decrease homelessness, increase available affordable housing, and allow our entire community to thrive. The UDO will be a standard by which Impact Greenville and this community can measure our collective efforts to, using the language of the draft, help our citizens enjoy unrivaled access to attainable housing and mobility options, and thus, more equitable opportunities to prosper. I thank you for your time and efforts in service this evening.
Next speaker is Amber Stewart.
Good evening, county council members. I am Amber Stewart at four fifteen Wade Hampton Boulevard, Greenville, South Carolina. This evening, I am speaking both as a resident and on behalf of the Greenville Housing Fund and Greenville Affordable Housing Coalition. Our coalition represents over fifty partners across Greenville County, including nonprofit and private affordable housing developers, neighborhood leadership, and local government representation, many of whom are in the audience tonight. I'll keep my remarks brief, as you've already heard from me during the last public engagement on the UDO. I do urge you to vote in favor of adopting the UDO, because after a four-year process with many meetings, drafts, and levels of community and county council engagement, the UDO helps to bring to life the vision of the county's comprehensive plan. It provides a path to help strengthen and find the balance of urban growth while protecting the rural areas. It expands housing options in the areas that are already urbanized, and most importantly, it also includes incentives to promote the development of affordable homeownership. The passing of the UDO is a step in the right direction. Future leadership and advocates can monitor and revise the UDO to ensure it evolves alongside the changing needs of our community. On behalf of the Greenville Affordable Housing Coalition, I respectfully ask the council to support the adoption of the UDO. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Next is Nathan Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council. My name is Nathan Brown, and I reside at one twenty-five West Montclair in Greenville. I am a parent, an entrepreneur, active community member, board member, and seven-year resident of Greenville County. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here to voice my support for the UDO because I believe in responsible growth and sustainable solutions to the challenges we face in housing and transit. As a board member of United Way, I support the UDO's incentives for affordable housing and diverse housing options. I also endorse its focus on enhancing mobility and connectivity through improved transit and sidewalks, giving residents better access to work and educational opportunities. As a data scientist, I value the council's efforts to create efficiency in zoning policies through the UDO. I hope its passage will establish a framework that encourages ongoing community involvement in the planning and sustainable development of Greenville County. Thank you for your service, hard work, and attention to this important topic. I'd like to submit my notes for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Frederick Huffman.
Hi, good evening. I'm Rick Huffman, and I reside at three sixty-four Mount Bethel Road in Pickens, but I own property in thirteen oh nine Grove Road in Greenville, and I'm a lifelong native of Greenville County. And good evening, and thank you, council, and planning staff, due to your diligence and good faith efforts to bring the county into compliance with the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan by passing the UDO. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the South Carolina Native Plant Society's Upstate Chapter, Friends of the Reedy River, and the Saluda River Basin Council, which we continue to serve on. And as a native of Greenville, I will strongly urge you to pass this, because I've lived here my whole life, I've seen a lot of changes come to Greenville, and seeing the loss of canopy is just hard to take. After more than four years and intense process, our county is so close to achieving this major milestone. Although the UDO has certain flaws, it is a living document and will offer unification and certainty and a path forward for managed, sustainable growth. Greenville County is going to grow, but how it grows matters. This is the last chance to protect the quality of life in Greenville County. In addition to the UDO, we urge the council to curb, look at metro sewer expansion into unzoned areas, and this will contribute to sprawl and would undo much of the gains of the UDO. So why do we support the passes? The Greenville County UDO is far better than the outdated and inconsistent land use regulations we are currently working with. The status quo is not in anyone's interest. The county's existing zoning and land development regulations are outdated and failing to meet the community's needs today. The UDO helps realize the vision of the county's unanimously adopted two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan that outlines a clear strategy for more physically and environmentally responsible growth. Clean water protections and managed growth, the UDO codifies the riparian buffer ordinance that was passed in January. The tree canopy protection, open space, the Greenville County has, is down to thirty-eight percent. The canopy, the canopy percentage is the lowest in the upstate. Mobility and connectivity, the UDO offers increased mobility options and reduces traffic and sprawl. Initial zoning reduces barriers, zoning reduces barriers, and the end will be better for the developers as well as the county. It offers more diverse affordable housing, offers incentives to pass toward affordability. We respectfully ask the county to do the right thing and pass the UDO and set us on a path toward more sustainability. Thank you.
Next speaker, Benjamin Lord.
Good evening, council. My name is Ben Lord. I live at four oh six Rogers Avenue in Greenville, South Carolina, in San Souci. I'm here this evening as a private citizen, also as a licensed professional engineer who works in water resources. I also serve on the board of the San Souci Neighborhood Alliance, Friends of the Reedy River, and I'm part of the Reedy River Water Quality Group. I strongly urge this council to vote yes on adopting the Greenville County UDO, which is a clear step in the right direction for our community and the environment. Over the years, I don't, I'm sure you are all aware, Greenville County has accumulated a labyrinthine mass of ordinances and documents and regulations that provide a confusing and near endless series of hurdles to clear for economic development. The UDO presents an opportunity to fix this. It provides a framework to manage and empower beneficial growth by streamlining decision-making, by consolidating regulations, eliminating loopholes for unscrupulous developers, and reducing inconsistencies that lead to lawsuits against the county and that ends up on the taxpayers' dime. The UDO is designed to be a living document, reflecting the diverse priorities and perspectives of the people of Greenville County. Nobody is claiming it's perfect, but I think we can all agree that it is more perfect, which is very much in the spirit of this great country of ours. So let's talk about what's in the UDO. The abundant forests and streams of Greenville County provide a natural backdrop to our way of life that we too often take for granted. It's essential that we seek to proactively manage and conserve these resources for future generations. And the UDO provides some of the simplest methods for doing this: solidification of the riparian buffers amendment that was passed by this council as a text amendment earlier this year, as well as enhanced tree protections. Hurricane Helene hit us really hard, but it could have been a lot worse. We got lucky here in Greenville County. When, not if, we get twenty inches of rain dropped on us, like happened to our neighbors to the north, will we be prepared? If we strip away our trees and our riparian buffers, we can lose our hillsides, we can lose our streams, and what's left of our forests to these powerful storms that we know are going to be coming. Keeping development away from these streams ensures our quality of life, and riparian buffers are the way to go about doing that. This provides one of the many tools that are offered by the UDO to manage growth. Greenville County will continue to grow regardless of the decision this council makes regarding the UDO. However, this council can decide if we choose the path of endless suburban sprawl, clear-cut forests, and government inefficiency, or if we choose the better path of managed growth and effective governance by passing this UDO. Thank you for my opportunity to speak tonight, and I look forward to you all doing the right thing.
Thank you. For those who keep up with the rules, we have only thirty minutes, but we, since this is so important and there's so much public interest, there's only a few more left, so we're gonna, the chairman's gonna allow us to exceed our thirty minutes that we normally set aside for this, okay? Next speaker?
Mr. Chairman, would that be the same for the people that speak against?
Yes, sir. Because if we cut it off, the people that oppose would not get a chance to speak. So we're gonna let everybody get a chance to speak.
So we'll go additional thirty, whatever minutes we need to go for anybody that opposes? Is that what I understood?
Everybody will get their three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Kirsten Owens.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Holly Owens, and I reside at nineteen Buena Vista Avenue in Greenville, South Carolina. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the UDO. I am a landscape architect with Earth Design, which is an environmentally focused firm here in Greenville. The new UDO will help us manage our rapid growth, sustainability, and our responsibility in the county for the growth. Greenville County is growing fast, and without an updated cohesive approach to development, we risk losing the natural character that makes our area unique. I'm gonna kind of focus on one of the areas of the UDO, since my colleagues have already spoken on some of the other areas, but really on the tree protection. Greenville County's tree canopy coverage is actually smaller than that of surrounding counties, and it's even smaller than that of urban areas such as Charlotte and Atlanta. The new UDO will help change this by introducing stronger guidelines to prevent unnecessary clearcutting and requiring that more trees be preserved in new developments. Other people have already talked about the stream buffer protection. That will also help us keep our canopy cover and also help make our waterways safe by preventing erosion, reduce pollution, and keep our waterways clean. Some may feel the UDA process has been rushed, but after four years of planning and public engagement, although the ordinance is not perfect, it's time to adopt the UDO. More importantly, this is a living document, which can be adjusted and can be monitored for its effectiveness. I ask you to adopt the UDO, and I thank you for my time today.
Thank you. Next speaker, Gail P.
My name is Gail P., and I am representing Habitat for Humanity of Greenville County and the 400-plus homeowners...
Your chairman's address, please. May we have your address, please?
Address for the record, please.
My address is 50 Grand Avenue, Greenville, South Carolina. And I represent, again, the 400-plus homeowners that have gone through our program, that are productive citizens, they pay taxes, they purchase durable goods, and they help those in need. When we look in our frontview mirrors, we see the migration of newcomers coming to this county. However, growth must be managed and viewed through the lens of planned development, ensuring that infrastructure systems are adequate and suitable for expansion. Roads are maintained and built to handle all modes of transportation, and there is fairness to long-term residents, and it should never be sidestepped. This UDO creates a playbook for managing growth that must have short-term goals and long-term goals. It is quite obvious that we all feel that it is not perfect. It is not a set of set guidelines. It doesn't address all the deficiencies in the current zoning and land development regulations. Habitat was at the table at the beginning and continued to make comments throughout this process. We feel that today, the approval of the UDO is a launch point for a process that will continue to be monitored, amended, and asked for community input. The process that we've been through has been arduous and very challenging. However, a delay in implementing these revisions will immediately create an environment that hinders our ability to manage a problem that's already out of the gate. Habitat views this as a step in the right direction. It is certainly not an all-in-all. We believe that the UDO supports the 2019 Comprehensive Plan that will help position this community to deal with some difficult challenges ahead. We will continue to partner with this and the newly-elected council to flesh out the details of the bonus incentives for developing workforce housing, providing blueprints that will expand housing options for our changing demographics. Habitat is confident that establishing a coalition of government, private sector, nonprofit organizations, and citizen groups is the missing link to crafting a sustainable solution for all. We support the adoption of the UDO, and we thank you for your time and consideration.
Madeline Bolick.
Good evening, Council. My name is Madeline Bolick. I live at 107 Beechridge Way in Greenville in Council District 24. I am a senior GIS specialist at Bolton &amp; Mink and a GIS professor at Clemson University in the City and Regional Planning Program. I have a master's degree in environmental management and a PhD in environmental data science. And I'm here today to speak to you on behalf of Friends of the Reddy River, that I've been on the Board of for the past six years, and also just to speak as a concerned Greenville County citizen. And we're asking you to vote yes in favor of the unified development ordinance. Areas of the UDO specifically enhance the Reddy River watershed by solidifying the riparian buffer protections that were passed as a text amendment earlier this year. Research shows time and time again that riparian buffer protection is one of the easiest passive ways to protect water quality and to prevent property loss due to bank collapse. These riparian buffers are areas of protected vegetation that capture pollutants that would otherwise wind up in the stream, and the roots of the vegetation help stabilize the banks to prevent land falling into the river. We all know that Greenville County has had tremendous growth over the past several decades, and my own personal research, as long as plenty of other studies, have shown that if riparian buffers are not protected, development is going to encroach on those areas, and that is going to lead to water quality degradation, along with degrading the natural areas as well. The UDO eliminates confusing and inconsistent language within the existing ordinances that pertain to how riparian buffers and other natural areas are managed, and this ensures that these areas can be protected with minimal confusion. The UDO also improves things like open space requirements, enhancing tree protections, has lot density-related requirements, all of which will help reduce sprawl and will help reduce runoff quantities that lead to flooding. It helps improve that bank stability. It helps reduce sediment and pollutant loading into the river. All of these things are ways that the UDO can help protect our watershed in Greenville County and really help preserve what we love about Greenville County, the green, the natural areas. As a proud Greenville County resident, I would love to see the county step up and pass this UDO, allow for that protection of our natural areas, and help preserve our county as the way we want to see it. As you've heard, we acknowledge that this is not a perfect document, but it is a positive step forward in the right direction, and that's truly how progress is made, one small incremental step at a time. It's not trying to find the perfect solution, because truly, we're never gonna get there. So please, I ask you to vote yes in favor of this UDO as a positive step forward to protecting what we love about Greenville County. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ryan Jolly.
My name is Ryan Jolly. I reside at 46 Orr Street here in Greenville. Several years ago, my wife and I stumbled upon this wonderful area and fell in love. And shortly after getting married, we had the opportunity to move pretty much anywhere we liked, and we chose to move to Greenville. We moved from the Midwest, like so many others invading the area, sorry, specifically Columbus, Ohio. But one of the many reasons that we chose to move to Greenville was the proactive planning and development process that has won praise for the city all around the nation and led to so many folks moving here. And we hope to see a similar framework adopted for the whole county. Modernizing the process for land development will have numerous benefits: protecting our green spaces and our water quality, preserving our tree canopy and large trees by restricting clearcutting, strengthening connectivity requirements to ensure safe mobility options, and allowing for a diverse housing stock and incentivizing affordable housing. And ultimately, the UDO, which, as I've heard, has been in development for over four years, will help implement the county's 2019 Comprehensive Plan, providing the modern, proactive, and fiscally responsible approach needed to manage the continued growth of Greenville. I've heard from others and can understand some of the criticisms, say the plan is not perfect. As a former school board member and city council member in suburban Ohio, I've been in your position, faced with similar decisions, and as you surely know, it's rare for any plan to be perfect from the start. But hopefully, we can not allow the perfect to be an implement to the possible. Please pass this ordinance as it is proposed, and then make necessary updates, improvements, what have you, as needed in the future. I thank you all for your service, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thomas Palma.
My name is Thomas Palma, and I live at 14 Clarendon Avenue in San Souci within District 19. I'm here to speak in favor of the UDO. I was born and raised in San Souci, and I'm very proud to say that my wife and I are now raising our two children in San Souci as well. Like so many people, especially longtime residents, my family and I are astounded by how fast this county has grown, some good, some not. I welcome growth in our county, and I recognize the positive that it brings, and we welcome our new neighbors who have moved here from across the country to get a small slice of this amazing county. Much of the growth is out of control, however. I am surprised that we haven't put streamlined guardrails up before now, given how worried everyone is about the out-of-control growth and development within Greenville. And I specifically applaud the significant work done by the county staff to date to address these concerns within the current UDO. I'm worried that before too long, we will lose the many things that make this county so special and have become beholden to overdevelopment driven by profits. As already laid out by many this evening, the plan has been in the works for years. If you scrap it now and take another year or two developing something perfect, the growth will continue in the same way it is now, which no one is excited about, and for many areas in the town, it could be too late. The UDO is a significant step towards protecting the things we love: farms, the trees, the rivers, and now, and doing it now, not years down the line. I fully expect and support this council's future work on revisions to the document to add additional protections when identified for the residents of Greenville County, but I urge you to put in place the protections included within the current UDO to avoid us from getting overrun in the meantime. I ask you to vote yes for the UDO, and I thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. That concludes those in favor. We now move to those opposed. There are four, and we will start with Audrey Passan.
Audrey Passan, 136 Old Altamont Ridge Road. I live on Paris Mountain. I am not going to read my prepared remarks because my heart is breaking as I listen to these beautiful people who want the same thing that I want: responsible growth and not unbridled, absurd growth. I am going to identify what I have in my heart for you to know, and that they have to know too, which is that the problems that we have today in Greenville with this irresponsible growth is a function that is an organically integrated issue. It starts with the folks that you have appointed to the Planning Commission. They're not good stewards or representatives of the communities of this county. They're in the industry. They want development, they always vote for development. That's the first problem. And by the way, that violates the state statute. You're supposed to appoint from a broad representative population of the whole county. You don't. Second thing, I have seen this over and over: staff, planning staff, misdirects the commission. They, and I've heard this myself, they say things like, "A developer has a vested right." They don't have a vested right. The people on staff don't even know what a vested right is. They misdirect the commission. Commission says, "Oh, this developer has a vested right. I have to say yes." I've seen the staff misdirect also on the question of density. They treat density as though it is a right. It's a cap. It's an allowance. It's subject to discretion, but this commission doesn't exercise discretion. They treat density as it's a given, we have to say yes. The third thing, which is just to me so offensive, I have seen your director of the planning staff tell the commission that the comprehensive plan is merely a guide. They don't have to follow it. It's not regulatory law. Until those problems are corrected, you will continue to have this disgusting overdevelopment in this county. The UDO is offensive. It rezones, without stating that it rezones. You had a duty to declare in your ordinance that you were rezoning. People from Paris Mountain don't even know you've rezoned the ESDPM because your adopting ordinance fails to comply with law and stated. Your 30-day notice that was posted is a smoking gun that says, "Someone on council knew it was a rezoning act, but no one has admitted it, so those folks aren't here to speak." Don't enact the UDO. Change the way you do business. I'm gonna submit my remarks for the record, but you didn't hear them.
Next speaker, Diane Freeland.
Diane Freeland, 413 Heather Falls Lane, Simpsonville. The UDO intentionally omitted important required parameters of the State Comprehensive Planning and Land Development Enabling Act from its ambit. There are too many affronts to the state law to describe here, but I will mention one particular egregious affront which sheds light on why Greenville is already irrationally overdeveloped in specific locations. That is because the planning department and the Planning Commission routinely ignore consideration of distribution of structures and population when they review a project. Population distribution will be permanently forgotten by design since it is amputated from the Important Purposes section of the UDO. Since distribution will not be recognized as one of the purposes for zoning and land development regulation in Greenville, it is a sure bet that it will never be mentioned or applied as a limiting factor in the ever-developing Greenville, even though it is clearly an exceptionally important consideration that trumps density allowances that would, if honored, spare us from continually increasing congestion. Over the years, county council has brought us congestion in the Pleasantburg-Brotherford Road Pebble Creek area, on Congry Road around the Haywood Mall, in Five Forks-Simpsonville, and other neighborhoods that deserve better land planning. Why is this? Because growth and economic development are county council's lord and master, even though this unbridled growth in development consistently hijacks our quality of life. The UDO is a supercharged power tool that will guarantee the hijacking continues. Let me add this: for those well-meaning folks who believe the natural environment will be enhanced by the UDO, the poultry preservation of green objectives is a thin distraction. UDO advocates have been blindsided and failed to appreciate that most of the UDO works against environmental protections and does not effectuate the vision of our comprehensive plan. Eager for something, these citizens are willing to accept nearly nothing of the protections that we have a right to expect from our comprehensive plan and the State Enabling Act. Unfortunately, we have been conditioned to expect Woodruff Road, so desperation for something a little bit better may be what stokes acceptance in the nature advocates groups. All that said, if there are good protections for the environment in the UDO, then enact those as standalone ordinances. But accepting the entire UDO and ending up with a new Atlanta is a ridiculous trade for the UDO's anemic approach to preservation of natural space, open space, rural space, farm space, forest space, mountain space, and cherished space, which are nominal and marginal at the UDO's best. I'd like to hand a copy of my statement to the clerk, so it's part of the public record, and I thank you.
Next speaker, Brenda Tate.
Brenda Bucik, Pebble Creek area, 200 Bearaway Taylors. I'm gonna speak sort of on behalf of the citizens that live in the classification of suburban neighborhoods who already have water and sewer, and I'm gonna speak to the density issues in the UDO. Some of the arguments for the UDO: it's better than what we have, it resolves inconsistencies in existing ordinances, it goes further to protect our canopy, et cetera. I know there's been much effort to create it, but it's extremely complicated and hard to understand for a common citizen, or for probably a lot of people. For my community and others that are in the comprehensive category of suburban with existing water and sewer, the devil is in the details, such as: the 7.2.2 Interior Buffer states generally, "An interior buffer is not required where identical zoning districts or groups of land uses are adjacent to one another." This clause applies to much of Pebble Creek, which is zoned R12 or a third of an acre. Most of the lots adjacent to available, potentially developable land in our area are a half to three-quarters of an acre. Even with the existing 20-foot buffer, the character of our community is being destroyed by higher-density infill. This clause in the UDO will make it worse. Second, we currently have no separate infill land development regulations. The UDO does not provide these. Much of the available land in our area requires infill development or reengineering of the land from existing land uses. Currently in Pebble Creek, the infill development is creating issues for existing homeowners with flooding and changes in the tree canopy. Three, the 20% density bonus for residential and multifamily developments if the developer includes affordable housing. Greenville County needs affordable housing, there is no doubt. Pebble Creek provides a wide variety of housing options, we've investigated, to rent or buy. The infill development we are seeing, however, is focused totally on developer value and using the surrounding value of the homes. For example, for an approval of 90 homes, there might be 18 additional lots, which would disrupt six to eight citizens and not produce very much of affordable housing. Lastly, the premise that the inequities will be resolved with amendments. The developers have their eye on everything that is in this ordinance, and there will be an onslaught of... (bell dings) Okay, I'm done.
The final speaker... The final speaker on the UDO is Jonell Phillips.
Jonell Phillips, 400 Phillips McCall Road, Greer 29651. I'll make this short, if I can. I just want to touch on, I don't, the whole oppose, are you in favor, you know, do we need a UDO? Yes. Do we have some issues that need to be addressed possibly before the UDO is approved? Yes. That's why I'm speaking in opposition and not in favor. I have been informed there are lots of different situations that need to be looked at, and I've been informed by staff that they don't see any future revisions. I don't know what that background is because I don't know all the situation, but I earnestly request that council look into that, and if there are errors, clear errors and corrections that need to be made, they get done before we approve this. We've heard a general statement about a living document, how we can change it going forward. We have nothing codified or no process to take a look at what needs to be fixed, when. How many amendments have been proposed to council? That die? That get kicked back? That get watered down? That don't go through? We spend a year trying to push through an amendment to an ordinance. We can't do that with this UDO. We need a good, solid process. So I'm asking you, as council, to implement that along with the UDO. There are a lot of good things in there. I'm afraid for the future. We can't fix everything. It's not going to be perfect. But I want people to understand, we already had a riparian buffer ordinance that goes forward with the sunset clause, just like it did before. Those are things we need to incorporate into our checks and balances going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, 21 speakers later, I declare this public hearing closed.
All right. Appreciate everybody's attention and comments. The next item in the final public hearing tonight is on the Metropolitan Sewer Subdistrict Boundary Expansion. As if the previous one wasn't enough, let's have a few more speakers talk about this. Chairman, Vice Chairman Seaman.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing the enlargement of the territory of the Metropolitan Sewer Subdistrict and other matters relating thereto. Our first speaker in favor is Melanie Ruhlman.
Good evening. In favor with an amendment. My name is Melanie Ruhlman. I reside at 301 Keeler Bridge Road in Marietta. I represent Save Our Saluda and Easily Combined Utilities, whose water supply watershed above Saluda Lake includes the northwest portion of Greenville County. I also serve on the Disaster Mitigation Committee, working on the Greenville County 2025 Multi-jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation and Resiliency Plan, and I also serve on the Saluda River Basin Council, working on the state water plan. I come before you this evening to ask for an amendment to the latest Metro Sewer Service Expansion proposal. The amendment would reduce the latest proposed expansion area west of Travelers Rest. Specifically, it would exclude the land between the North Saluda River and Saluda River and Keeler Mill Road, as shown on the attached maps. This would still allow for growth west of TR and at the same time would protect sensitive land areas around the rivers. The land area proposed for exclusion from Metro's proposal has been a focal point for conservation over the past six years through significant state and local investments from the South Carolina Conservation Bank, Easily Combined Utilities, the South Carolina Office of Resilience, and more recently, the Greenville County Historic and Natural Resource Trust. Furthermore, the South Carolina Office of Resilience, through the 2023 Resilience Plan and in cooperation with the South Carolina Forestry Commission, the Green Infrastructure Center, and the Southern Region of the USDA Forest Service have all identified this same area along the Saludas west of TR as a priority area for conservation and green infrastructure. The area between the Saludas and Keeler Mill Road consists of expansive, mature forests that occur along steep slopes, rivers, and feeder streams, wetlands, and floodplains. The value in protecting such sensitive lands is in maintaining their function as nature-based solutions for resiliency against future extreme weather events and flooding and the threat that higher-density development poses to these valuable natural resources and their native habitats, downstream water quality, and the public drinking water source at Saluda Lake, which already suffers from excessive sedimentation. Unfortunately, the newest Metro proposal includes this same priority conservation area for sewer service expansion. Authorization of sewer service into these critical lands undermines the investments and work of local, state, and federal agencies, utilities, and conservation organizations, and invites high-density growth into sensitive watershed areas. It also makes potential future conservation in this priority area much more challenging and costly to local and state funders. Hurricane Helene taught us the danger of building around streams, rivers, and floodplains and in steeper terrain. The proposed amendment would be a protective, proactive step to avoid that kind of catastrophe while still allowing for responsible growth. Please support the amendment to reduce the metro boundary expansion west of TR to protect the priority conservation area between the Saludas and Keeler Mill Road. Thank you. And this is in your inbox, and I'd like to leave this with these maps with the clerk.
Sure. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carol Elliott.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Vice Chair. My name is Carol Elliott, and I live at 209 Winston Court in Greenville. I am the General Manager of Metropolitan Sewer Subdistrict. Metro has been working with county council and stakeholders for several months to refine our boundary expansion request. We have listened to council members and stakeholders, and after four proposals, we have received committee approval for council's consideration of second reading tonight. Metro's boundary expansion, as presented tonight, matches the future land use map designation for suburban use as defined in the 2019 Greenville County Comprehensive Plan. This proposal does not include areas labeled as rural on the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use map. Metro provides vital wastewater collection service to over 103,000 homes, businesses, and industry as a partner with REWAA throughout Greenville County. We do not charge taxes or any fees on Greenville County tax bills. Only our connected customers pay for our services billed through their water providers. Metro does not drive development. We are a partner with Greenville County and only provide service where the county approves development. Metro does not install sewer infrastructure speculating on development. This would be bad business and an irresponsible expense of our customers' money. Again, our boundary expansion does not mean sewer expansion. Historically, Metro's boundaries have covered large portions of the county that do not have sewer service. This disproves accusations that our boundaries create sprawl and dense development. Development only occurs within the county at the density approved by the county. REWAA's boundaries were enlarged by the General Assembly to include all of Greenville County in 2019. Enlarging Metro's boundaries will allow Metro to be the wastewater collection provider for REWAA if and only if development is approved by Greenville County within the proposed boundary expansion areas. The expansion of our boundaries and services protects public health, the environment, and our most valuable resource, water. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carl Drew.
My governing name is Carl, but I'm Randy Drew. I live at 10 Paris Mountain Avenue, and I'm a member of the Metro Connect's Board of Commission, and I'm here tonight to ask you in support of Metro's boundary expansion. I echo a lot of what Ms. Elliott just also said, but we bring this matter to council because under home rule, council has the authority to act and has obligations to the citizens of Greenville County to carry out state law, increasing the boundaries of Metro Connect's service area. Metro Connects provides wastewater collections in Greenville County, conveying that wastewater to renewable water resources or REWAA for trunk and treatment services. Metro and REWAA are partners in protecting public health, the environment, and, most importantly, our water. As state law and our enabling legislative states, as REWAA boundaries are enlarged in Greenville County, the boundaries of Metro Connect should also be enlarged. In 2019, the General Assembly gave REWAA the authority to serve all of Greenville County. Metro Connect is not asking council to allow us to serve all of Greenville County. As the law states, we're only asking to serve the areas defined by Greenville County approved in 2019 Comprehensive Plan. Metro Connect has no plans or desire to install new collection lines where it doesn't make sense to do so. We would be wasting finances of Metro Connect. Metro Connect is working to proactively maintain, rehabilitate, and replace the critical infrastructure that it currently owns and operates. In other words, our hands are full already, our plates full, and to continue to provide service to our 103 residential business customers. If you don't hear anything else I've said tonight, please hear me when I say, and I echo Ms. Carol, sewer does not drive development. Sewer follows development, and it's up to you folks what you approve in development. Once you approve it, then Metro and REWAA is going to work together, but again, it comes back to what you have approved. Sewer is technically available from REWAA anywhere in Greenville County. Expanding Metro's boundaries will not increase sewer availability, but it can help prevent private sewer systems of lower standards from being installed and operated in Greenville County. Thank you for your time. I knew I was going to get it. I appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, we've got five speakers in opposition. The first is Keith Som.
My name is Keith Som. I live at 309 Farmwood Drive in Fountain Inn, right along the Paint Branch Creek. I am in opposition for the proposed run down Paint Branch Creek. Spoke to Metro Connect several times, but I'll let some of my neighbors that I know that are here speak on behalf of our major concerns. But what I want to speak about is that before Hurricane Helene, Governor Henry McMaster formed the Water SC that will unite South Carolina's top minds and key stakeholders to craft a plan that balances our economic and environmental interests, which will ensure that all water resources are plentiful and that our economy remains strong for generations to come. That does not mean tearing down, and had a lot to do with what the class, or the other group that was saying with the UDO. Tearing down trees and clearcutting trees along Paint Branch Creek just because it's cheaper to run a sewer line downhill to where they want to get to is not the way to go. We've seen right now what Helene has done. When we were going to speak and talk about this before, it was before Helene. When McMaster set this up, it was September 24th. It was before Helene. We have had floods in the Paint Branch Creek way before Helene or any hurricane that takes The sickening part about this is that one mature tree will dissipate 10,000 to 11,000 gallons annually. That comes from the South Carolina Floodwater Commission. That was formed after Hurricane Joaquin in 2018. So the state's big initiative to plant trees to help mitigate as the water runs from North Carolina on down to the Ace Basin and down out through Charleston is the number-one priority of the state. So I am not against, there's plenty of ways to run this sewer system down to where they're wanting to get to at 418. Speaking of 418, water runoff has caused the closure of 418 right now, with that being completely undermined. But I just want to say this before I run out of time and that thing gives me a heart attack again. Out of Columbia, the last thing that I talked to with the state has said, "Ultimately, local leaders will lose funds if they continue to build without strategic plans to ensure trees and natural resiliencies." So we just need to think about this. There's plenty of other ways to run that line down there.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Palladino.
I reside at 310 Farmwood Drive in Fountain Inn, happen to be Mr. Shum's neighbor. He expressed some of our concerns in regards to how this line is going to be run. I'll be forthright in the fact that my objective is somewhat, I'll say, shortsighted and very focused in terms of our concerns. Sent each of you an email this morning. I know you get tons of emails trying to explain our issue with Paint Branch Creek. To give you just some brief background, we live on the extension of Farmwood Drive through a 100-year floodplain, or what at one time was classified as a 100-year floodplain. As growth has happened and we've lacked control of stormwater runoff, what used to flood, I've lived in the same neighborhood 27 years, the same house that I built and raised my three kids in for 25 years. I've watched that area flood from once every three to five years to once every couple years to now, once or twice a year. We went to the county in 2020, asked for some assistance. They said, "Look, we'll consider it if you bring it up to standards." The county engineer gave us a great letter, a list of guidelines. We met with somebody down there. He kind of reviewed the guidelines with us, kind of looked at it, told us, "From a permitting standpoint, what you need to do, it's going to cost you too much money. You're probably never going to get it passed. If I do, if you don't like it, go ahead and move." Not necessarily what you want to hear from the county. I don't remember the individual's name, but not what we wanted to hear. So at that time, we took it upon ourselves. We each owned a portion of that drive, spent over $100,000 collectively to do drainage improvements, so that now we kind of know what we have. We know what we have at this point. We can live with it. It floods twice a year, recedes very quickly. However, now they've proposed to come directly across our drive, clearcut 30 feet of trees through this floodplain in these wetlands with no assurances except a two-year warranty on utility lines and other things. We've tried to talk to them. We've made suggestions to them, add some culverts while you're doing the process. They've basically given us information late. I'm not even sure why I'm here, because according to the email I got today, Metro Connect is not required to go to Greenville County Council for approval. This project, however, must go to the Board of Commissions on 11/18. I'm being told basically that county approved it, land development approved it on 6/19, and Army Corps on 7/3, so it's a done deal. So I'm not even sure why I'm here tonight, but I would just hope if this is the right place to present this grievance, that you would hear it out and do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Audrey Passan.
Audrey Passan, 136 Old Altamont Ridge Road. I live on Paris Mountain. You know, I come here to be helpful, but I sound like the heavy. And because I'm a lawyer, I want you to know that I actually read the statutes. I read your rules. I read the comp plan. I really want you to be in compliance with these things. And so this... And so this, what I'm about to tell you now shouldn't be coming up now. I should have been able to tell you this the last time you met. Of course, I wasn't allowed to stay in the room, so I didn't get to tell you. But the bad news, folks, you don't have, don't blame me, you don't have jurisdiction to think about this thing now. I'll cite you the statute provisions that explain that to you. Anytime you look at an ordinance that touches land, you really have to ask, what is this? What does it do? And what this thing does is it changes the comprehensive plan. Why do I say that? The comprehensive plan has maps, official maps, and these sewers are not on it. So if you want a new map with sewer on it, it's true, right? You have to deal with the change that this is to the comprehensive plan. Now, there's a number of statutes that apply when you're making a change to the comprehensive plan, and all of them say, and I'll cite you them, I'm going to give them to you written down, I don't want to bore you by reading them, but all of them, all of them go to Planning Commission, and all of them require, like it or not, a public hearing. So that's where this belongs. You don't have discretion, and I hate to disagree with the nice, tall gentleman who said that you have authority to act, but you do not have authority to act. You don't have jurisdiction. Your own rules say. If you don't have jurisdiction, you can't entertain it. But you can, you can recommend it with a resolution. And I really suggest you pull back and follow the law on this one. It's an easy one to do. I don't know how you got this far. Maybe Mr. Tolleson was busy getting ready to retire. This should never have gone this far. And no matter how strong the personalities of some on your council may be, you just don't have jurisdiction, and you have to comply with your Rule 3F, which says you can't consider this thing. So I hope you'll correct it. I'm going to point out specifically 6-29-340, oh, why bore you? You have it, I'll make a record. Okay, here we go. 629-520B, 67-1240, 67-1260, 67-1270, and 68-1280. I have 30 seconds. I'm going to finish early. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janelle Phillips.
I don't know about you, but my neck hurts, my head hurts. I'm not opposed to sewer. Sewer's a great thing. On the Planning Commission, we see way too many developments and subdivisions coming through where sewer is not available. However, I'm against the lack of foresight that's involved with Metro. Many of you know, I have lots of experience with sewer lines, one beside me, one behind me. And I know these people in Fountain Inn, it's a whole different situation than this. But it brought tears to my eyes because, yes, I am dealing, we deal with erosion, immense erosion, and stabilization costs, expenses that have occurred as a result of the sewer lines going through our property. We have property that cannot be used, we can't even run a fence through it. Well, we could, we could put a cow in it, but I guarantee you, when they came through to do maintenance, somebody would leave a gate open, and you don't want a cow getting out in five forks. Trust me. It's been done. So that scenario, I'm seeing how we've focused our areas now, which is a good thing. And we need to look through the whole county, but we're looking at, you know, suburban designated comp plan areas. Well, do you know those range from 0 to 1 to 6 to 10 dwellings per acre? The suburban future land use has four or five different categories. They're different. So how accurate are they? Right now, we're working on the five-year review. Are we looking at all of Greenville County? Are we looking at our area plans, our community plans, and making sure they match? Because I have to tell you, the five forks area plan does not match the comp plan. These are things that you as council and in the county need to make sure are aligned before we go forward with this vision, so that we put sewer where it's going. Do the sewer go where the county doesn't approve development? No. But the county only approves higher-density development when the sewer will go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Anthony Scalzitti.
I know, sorry. I have an Italian last name, so you'd think I would have gotten it right.
That's okay. I don't judge that anymore. My name's Anthony Scalzitti. I live at 307 Farmwood Drive in the same neighborhood that my colleagues here are at. We are opposed to the location and approach that's being taken. Many of the people that spoke earlier are living, it sounds like north of 85, in a different part of Greenville that aren't going to be impacted by having this 30-foot land being basically clear cut. I have about a half acre that's going to be impacted. My neighbor's going to have about an acre that's impacted. We moved here 22 years ago, or we built our house 22 years ago, specifically knowing that the part of our land that was on the floodplain was going to be there. That's safe. That's protection that we could have. We wanted to have land. We're very much into nature and the environment and conserving and doing what we think is the right thing. As these guys have talked about, we've seen a dramatic change year over year with our private drive being flooded to the point where we can't cross it. We've planted more trees and shrubs. People have told us how to mitigate that, to reduce the chance, and I cannot imagine having a 30-foot clear-cut path of what that's going to do to probably, I'm estimating 500 trees. We didn't know anything about it. Nobody consulted me. Nobody asked me my opinion. We have been offered about $3,000 to take our, for me to take my half acre of land, and the value of the land has been cut dramatically because of the fact that it's near a floodplain. How would you like to have that land that you bought? And imagine what that would do to your property value when there's a big patch cut through. We know there's better ways to do it, and so I ask for your consideration for that and for, I'm sure there's other people that weren't able to show up here tonight. I'd like to ask that what we have could be amended to make something that would be more appropriate, and for the people that are impacted, there would be a better, more fair compensation for what we have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, having no other speakers, I'll declare this public hearing closed.
All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Let me just say this, thank you for everybody that came out for the public hearing tonight. It was good to hear from everybody on both sides of the issue. Item number nine is resolutions, and I'll call on Chairman Kirven for 9A, Project CHQ1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get started, as has been pointed out tonight, there's a whole lot of things on tonight's agenda from here on out. Most, all of them, not all of them, but most of them are from the Finance Committee, been through committee and brought back to the floor of the council. Resolutions, well, let me say this, the county nor the Finance Committee has the, has control over when a company or companies want to come into the county and talk about their investments, our proposed investments into the county. We don't control that. They do that when they want to, we can talk to them, but it doesn't mean they're going to get an agreement or not. That's why we're here tonight with the council, and that's why we have the Finance Committee. We follow the procedures that are laid out in state law and laid out in the council of rules and ordinances to the best of our ability. Word about resolutions, I was looking at these earlier in the week. What is an inducement resolution related to economic development? Well, inducement resolutions, and we're going to start with those in a minute, are non-binding on the county. They're simply a way required by statute, state statute, to provide notice of a FLO project in which the county may or may not agree by subsequent ordinance. So we're going to start with those inducement resolutions, which is just a way to inform the public, and it's non-binding, and anything that relates to economic development or FLOs will have to be approved by ordinance by the full council, somewhere down the line, maybe or maybe not. So back to item 9A, Mr. Chairman, Project CHQ1. I move for adoption, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement, binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and South Point Commerce Center LLC, whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute one or more fee in lieu of tax and special source credit agreements with respect to a project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes and whereby Project CHQ1 will be provided certain credits against fee payments in reimbursement of investment in related qualified infrastructure and providing for related matters. And that's the motion for this inducement resolution from the Finance Committee.
All right. All those in favor.
Respectfully, a roll call vote.
Okay. Let's have a roll call on adoption, please. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I think the roll call is supposed to show up on the board. Can they please make sure the roll call shows?
Okay, there you have it.
Thank you.
All right, the ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Item 9B, Chairman Kirven.
Okay, one other comment at this point, some of these are going to be repetitive and perhaps tedious to some people, so bear with us, and I appreciate your patience. When we get to ordinances at first reading from the Finance Committee, I think there are 25 of those tonight. So we're going to break that up, and Vice Chairman Seaman, also Vice Chair of Finance Committee, is going to present those, and I'll try to get through the ones prior to that, long as my voice holds up. So where'd item 9B, Project CHQ2, inducement resolution? I move for adoption, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and South Point Commerce Center LLC, whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute one or more fee in lieu of tax and special source credit agreements with respect to a project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes and whereby Project CHQ2 will be provided certain credits against fee payments in reimbursement of investment in related qualified infrastructure and providing for related matters. That's a motion, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, question before we vote. Is, I want, is, do, on any of these Project CHQ2s, are there any tenants or businesses in place now that's going to be receiving these, or is this an empty building?
Well, this is just a resolution to start the process. These items, these particular ones will be presented for first reading, and then they'll move forward through the process thereafter. But basically, these would be speculative business properties that would be, provide opportunities for smaller businesses to get started as a launching pad because there's a shortage of that size space available in the Greenville market at this time.
But historically, when we give these, in there already a tenant, we're already helping?
No, no, this is all perspective at this point. We haven't agreed to anything.
Right, but historically, when we give FLOs or start this process, there's a tenant in place. Am I incorrect on that?
Well, I'm just, you know, I don't, I think this is off-the-track subject discussion right now. We're just dealing with a motion that's on the floor.
All right, all those in favor.
Motion for roll call.
Roll call is requested. Hey, we're all going to be up late tonight with elections, so let's do it. All right, you see the vote count? The resolution is adopted. 9C, Chairman Kirven.
Yes, sir. 9C, I move for adoption, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and South Point Commerce Center LLC, whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute one or more fee in lieu of tax and special source credit agreements with respect to a project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes and whereby Project CHQ4 will be provided certain credits against fee payments and in reimbursement of investment in related qualified infrastructure and providing for related matters.
All right, all those in favor.
Motion for roll call.
Roll call.
Madam Clerk, you could just leave the screen up like you left it, because it'll be the same thing every time.
Yeah, through J, please.
Mr. Chairman, you have nine in favor, three in opposition.
All right, item 9D, Chairman Kirven.
I move for adoption, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of inducement agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and South Point Commerce Center LLC, whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute one or more fee in lieu of tax and special source credit agreements with respect to a project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment in lieu of fees in lieu of taxes and whereby Project CHQ5 will be provided certain credits against fee payments in reimbursement of investment in related infrastructure, qualified infrastructure, and providing for related matters.
All right, we have this motion in front of us. Roll call has been requested, so we'll move to roll call voting on 9D.
Mr. Chairman, you have nine in favor, three in opposition.
All right, 9E, Chairman Kirven.
I move for adoption, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and South Point Commerce Center LLC, whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute one or more fee in lieu of tax and special source credit agreements with respect to a project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes and whereby Project CHQ6 will be provided certain credits against fee payments in reimbursement of investment in related qualified infrastructure and providing for matters, related matters.
All right, question is adoption of the resolution. Roll call has been requested. We'll proceed to roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, you have one abstention, two in opposition, and nine in favor.
All right, 9E is adopted. We'll move to 9F, Project Strong.
Yes, sir. I move for adoption, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Project Strong 2024, whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute a fee in lieu of tax and special source credit agreement with respect source credit agreement with respect to a project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes and whereby the project will be provided certain credits against fee payments and reimbursement of investment in related qualified infrastructure and providing for related matters.
All right. Question is adoption of the resolution. Roll call has been requested. We'll proceed to roll call vote. Project Strong, nine F. The resolution is adopted. We'll move to nine G, Chairman Kirven.
I move for adoption a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement buying between Greenville County, South Carolina and Project Blackbird whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute a fee in lieu of tax and special source credit agreement with respect to a project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes and whereby Project Blackbird will be provided certain credits against fee payments and reimbursement of investment in related qualified infrastructure and providing for related matters.
Question is adoption of the resolution. A roll call has been requested. We'll proceed to a roll call vote.
Chairman, you have eleven in favor, one in opposition.
All right. Project Bolt, nine eight, Chairman Kirven.
Yes, sir. I move for adoption a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement buying between Greenville County, South Carolina and Project Bolt whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute a fee in lieu of tax and special source credit agreement with respect to a project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes and whereby Project Bolt will be provided certain credits against fee payments in reimbursement of investment in related qualified infrastructure and providing for related matters.
All right. Question is adoption of the resolution. Roll call has been requested. We'll proceed to a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw. Roll call on I, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you have eleven in favor and one in opposition.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted. Next one is nine I, Greater Greenville Sanitation, request for public hearing. Chairman Kirven.
I move for adoption a resolution calling for a public hearing to be held upon the question of the issuance of not exceeding $34 million general obligation bonds of the Greater Greenville Sanitation District, South Carolina, providing for the publication of notices of such public hearing and providing for the matters related thereto.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item nine J, Lawrence Road Redevelopment Plan, Chairman Kirven.
I move for adoption a resolution of Greenville County, South Carolina in support of a plan for the redevelopment of the City of Greenville redevelopment project area Lawrence Road Redevelopment Plan within the municipal limits of the city and other matters related thereto.
All right. Question is adoption of the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it.
One opposed?
One opposed. The ayes have it. The adoption of the resolution, the resolution is adopted. Section 10 is our ordinances at third reading and the first one is the Greenville-Lawrence Multi-County Industrial Park Agreement. Chairman Kirven.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Ten A.
Ten A, yes, sir. I move for adoption at third reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a multi-county industrial business park buying between Greenville County, South Carolina and Lawrence County, South Carolina, to designate the boundaries of the park and other related matters.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The agreement is adopted at third reading. Ten B, Transfer of Fairmont Avenue Properties, Chairman Kirven.
I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance authorizing the transfer of approximately 15 acres of real property located off Fairmont Avenue to the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority and to authorize the execution of a deed and any other documents and agreements related thereto.
All right. Question is adoption at third reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted at third reading. The next item are ordinances at second reading. I'll call on Dr. Fant. You've got quite a few of them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CZ 2024-055, property located at 29 Ridgeway Drive, East Dorchester Boulevard and Williamsburg Drive, Greenville, requesting rezoning from R12 to FRD. The Planning Commission and the Committee both recommended approval with conditions. Have an amendment.
State your amendment, please.
I move to amend the request to require the following conditions. One, submit a final development plan for review and approval prior to the issuance of any land development or building permits. And number two, maintain and establish a landscape buffer building setback and signage requirements as specified in the memo on comment responses provided by staff.
All right. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
On behalf of the Committee, I move for approval of the ordinance at second reading.
As amended?
As amended.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item, 58.
CZ 2024-058, property located on Furman Hall Road, Greenville, requesting rezoning from RMHP to S1. The Planning Commission and Committee recommended approval. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval of the ordinance at second reading.
All those in favor of approval at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. It's approved at second reading. 61.
CZ 2024-061, property located at 212 Feaster Road, Greenville, requesting rezoning from RS to C1. The Planning Commission and the Committee recommended approval. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval of the ordinance at second reading.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. 62.
CZ 2024-062, property located at 719A and B Pelham Road, Hudson Road and Jamestown Drive, Greenville, requesting rezoning from R20 to FRD. The Planning Commission and Committee both recommended approval. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval of the ordinance at second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I ask for a roll call, please.
All right. A roll call has been requested. We'll proceed to roll call vote.
Chairman, you have one in favor, eleven in opposition.
All right. The motion, the motion to approve has been denied at second reading. The next item is 63.
CZ 2024-063, property located at 307 Edward Street and Klein Street, Taylor's, requesting rezoning from R20 to R10. The Planning Commission and Committee both recommended approval. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval of the ordinance at second reading.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. 64.
CZ 2024-064, property located at 2 Sheffield Lane, Orange Road, Taylor's, requesting rezoning from R20 to R12. The Planning Commission and the Committee recommended approval. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval of the ordinance at second reading.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted or the approval is adopted at second reading. 65.
CZ 2024-065, property located at, at south of Highway 11, east of Highway 115 and Highway 14, north of Highway 414 and west of Greenville-Spartanburg County Boundary, requesting rezoning from unzoned to AG, RR3, RR1, and RSR 12. The Planning Commission and the Committee both recommended approval. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval of the ordinance at second reading.
All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. It's adopted. Final, 121.
CZ 2024-021, property located at 2222 and 2224, East Lee Road, Taylor's, requesting rezoning from R20 to R10. The Planning Commission, the Planning Commission recommended and the Committee recommended denial. On behalf of the Committee, I move to deny the ordinance at second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to hold for the same reasons I've been holding for a while.
Wait, 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 wait. I thought we recommended approval for this one. Somebody's on P and D, somebody double-checked because nothing changed and we decided to send it out for approval.
Right. I just, I motion to hold.
No, we about to give it to you because we'd already agreed to approve it. So, there's no need to hold it for the fifth month.
Well, I think the neighborhood is opposed to it without, because they would need to ask for variances and we're trying to get away from developments that are using variances.
So, do you want to deny it or you want it approved? Could we give up because you've held it like for five months?
Well, I think it's a hardship a little bit on the applicant. It's just a matter of getting the drawings, the applicant and the neighborhood just to agree.
But nothing changed. When it came back to committee, there had absolutely been zero communication and nothing changed from the time it came out the first time until it came back to committee, zero.
All right. Let's do this first. This is good back and forth, but was it reported out of committee correctly?
Yeah, it was reported out at 10:14, yeah, P and D on the 10:14 meeting as approval.
Yeah. Okay. We agreed to approve it versus denying it.
I would ask the council to deny it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harrison?
We, we had a long discussion at P and D about this one and I'll just weigh in real quick. We've been here for a long time, but I think, I think it was longer than five months. I think it's been held for eight months and I think we were promised an update at P and D of working with both sides and we never got anything. I just think it's unfair to the applicant who's been literally handcuffed for eight months. So, that is the reason for approval and I feel like we owe it to an applicant that's been handcuffed for this long with no, no guidelines, no instructions, no nothing. I feel, I feel strongly about moving this forward, but that's just me.
Does the applicant want this to be approved?
I would, I don't know, but I would assume so. We haven't heard him change an application.
I, I talk to the applicant quite often. He wants it approved, but he wants the neighborhood to be happy. They've been there a long time. He owns restaurants in town and so it's sensitive whether it gets approved or not over the objections of the neighborhood. So, I would just ask for one more hold that supposedly the engineer has redrawn where they do not need what are they called, variances? So, I understand all the, I mean, nobody's put out really by this. We're just holding it.
So, we, this is an error. We didn't move to deny it. We did approve it, right?
That's correct. You approved it at P and D.
Okay. So, you asked to hold it again?
Yes, sir.
Well, can I, I'm sorry.
Ms. Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just procedurally though, will we be able to amend it on the floor if the applicant comes back with changes? Or do we need to make, is there some procedure we need to do here so we can hold it on the floor so it doesn't go back to committee, but we would still have the ability to make changes here?
Or could we just send it forward to third reading with ability to make changes at third reading?
And that way, we can keep the process going.
Sure. I, I agree with that.
Perfect. It's called collaboration. That works.
Why don't you make a motion to make amendments at third reading?
I make a motion that we leave it open to suspend the rules at third reading and make amendments at third reading.
All right. Do we need to adopt it first before we make that motion? I just thought about that.
Yeah, to, well, to go to third reading with amendments, yes, you do need to adopt.
Okay. Let's, let's take a vote on second reading. So, the motion out of committee is to approve. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it now. Mr. Shaw, would you like to make your motion?
Do I make a motion to suspend the rules now?
To allow for amendments at third reading.
I make a motion to allow amendments at third reading on this application.
All those in favor of allowing for amendments at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Just a reminder to you that they have to be in writing. According to our rules, the amendments need to be in writing in our packet, just as a reminder.
Thank you. I'll do that.
Thank you. Piedmont Area Plan, I think that's 10B, Chairman Fant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Eleven B, sorry.
Eleven B. I move for approval at second reading and ordinance to amend the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan in the Piedmont Study Area.
All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Unified Development Ordinance, Chairman Fant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval at second reading and ordinance to adopt the Greenville County Unified Development Ordinance.
All right. All those?
Roll call.
All right. We'll proceed to a roll call vote.
Seven in favor, five in opposition.
Okay. It's adopted at second reading. 11D, Metropolitan Sewer Subdistrict Boundary Expansion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick note, the folks that spoke from Fountain Inn would love for you to speak with Carol, but that is not necessarily related to this particular expansion, but definitely a concern. So, Carol, if that would be all right, if you guys connect with those folks. And just also for my colleagues to remind you that this was sent back to committee at the request of the body, but then also the ordinance was amended at committee thanks to feedback from council and from other constituents. Metro listened to those responses and so the ordinance, the map that you see tonight is part of your packet, is the, is the amendment coming out of committee? So, actually, I'm going to have two motions for you and the first would be to approve the amendment, which is the second map in your packet.
All right. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval at second reading, the ordinance as amended.
All right. All those in favor?
Roll call.
All right. We'll proceed to a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, this is not supposed to show up as we vote to allow Council Fant to...
I, I don't know that there's a prohibition against it. It's no different than the one in Columbia. Down in Columbia, it's shown.
It's never shown before, but now it does. Okay. No change of rules?
Yeah. No, it's not a rules change. All right. By vote of 12 to zero, the boundary expansion is adopted. Ordinance is adopted. Item 11E, Slater Marietta Fire District Geo Bonds. Chairman Kirven?
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption at second reading and ordinance finding that Slater Marietta Fire District may issue not exceeding $1,275,000 of general obligation bonds to authorize the Board of Fire Control of the Slater Marietta Fire District, South Carolina, to issue such bonds and to provide for the publication of notice of said sale finding and authorization.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is 11F, Lake Cunningham Fire District.
I move for approval at second reading and ordinance finding that the Lake Cunningham Fire District may issue not exceeding $9 million of general obligation bonds to authorize the Board of Fire Control of the Lake Cunningham Fire District, South Carolina, to issue such bonds and to provide for the publication of notice of said finding and authorization.
All right. All those in favor of approval of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item, 11G, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Park Agreement Amendment.
I move for approval at second reading and ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 Park of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Move to item 11H, Sale of County-Owned Properties, 6 Bailey Mill Road.
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading and ordinance to authorize a sale of... Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to authorize the sale of county-owned 1.995 acre parcel of real property located at 6 Bailey Mill Road, Travelers Rest, at the corner of Highway 414 and Bailey Mill Road, and to authorize the Chairman of County Council and the County Administrator to execute appropriate deeds and agreements related thereto.
All those in favor of approval of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Ordinance is adopted at second reading. Now, we're going to move to ordinances at first reading. We got one more sprint tonight, and I'm going to call on Vice Chair Seaman to take twelve A in the next twenty-five.
Thank you.
I was going to ask the same thing.
Is there a way to consolidate this, Chris, or do we, do we need to read each one?
I'm a really strong reader. I'm going to go for it.
I think you should read each one. It's kind of like how we handle the zoning docket.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I present for first reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and the South Point Commerce Center LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be the subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
All right, this item will stay on the floor?
Item.
One other thing you may consider, you could just read title on these.
Okay.
First reading by title only.
Is that?
I've heard of that, yeah. We've done that before.
Any objections to doing that from the body?
No.
All right, with no objections, we will read each of the titles, because all of these are staying on the floor.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I present for first reading, the Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, 2010 Park, Project CHQ-1.
All right, this item will stay on the floor?
Item B is, I present for first reading, Project CHQ-2, Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement.
All right, this will stay on the floor as well?
Item D, I present for first reading, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, 2010 Park, Project CHQ-2.
This will stay on the floor as well?
Item E, I present for first reading, Project CHQ-4, Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement.
All right, this will be on the floor as well?
Item F, I present for first reading, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, 2010 Park, Project CHQ-4.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item G, I present for first reading, Project CHQ-5, Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item H, I present for first reading, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, 2010 Park, Project CHQ-5.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item I, I present for first reading, Project CHQ-6, Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item J, I present for first reading, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, 2010 Park, Project CHQ-6.
This item will stay on the floor?
And item K, I present for first reading, Project Double Eagle 1, Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement.
This item will stay on the floor?
The next item I present for first reading is Project Double Eagle 2, Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item M, I present for first reading, Project Strong, Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement.
Item will stay on the floor?
And item N, I present for first reading, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, 2010 Park, Project Strong.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item O, I present for first reading, Project Blackbird, Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item P, I present for first reading, General Electric, Partial Agreement, Assumption and Bifurcation Agreement, 1999.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item Q, I present for first reading, General Electric, Partial Assignment, Assumption and Bifurcation Agreement, 2014.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item R, I present for first reading, Project Constellation, Second Amendment to Existing Filo and Incentive Agreement.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item S, I present for first reading, Project Bolt, Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item T, I present for first reading, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, 2010 Park, Project Bolt.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item U, I present for first reading, Greater Greenville Sanitation District, General Obligation Bonds.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item V, Pickens County, I present for first reading, Pickens-Greenville Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement, Speedway Park.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item W, I present for first reading, Sale of County-Owned Property, Chapman Grove Road, Pelzer.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item X, I present for first reading, Transfer of County-Owned Parks, Pointset Park, Gateway Park, and Trailblazer Park.
This item will stay on the floor?
Item Y, I present for first reading, Lease of County-Owned Property, 118 McGee Street, Greenville.
Item will stay on the floor. Now, we're at twelve Z, Zoning Ordnances. Chairman Fant?
Can I read them all out? Or you want me to consolidate them? I present for first reading, zoning docket, CZ 24-071 through CZ 2024-073.
All right, we'll send those to the Planning and Development Committee. Next item, our committee reports. Chairman Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the Committee, I move to appoint the following. BJ Koontz to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Commission, Kevin Brady to the Airport Commission, Robert Sloman Jr. to the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Commission, B. Curtis Rose to the Arena District. Our Board of Assessment Appeals, we are reopening the special application period for two weeks. Lawrence Whitser to the Buxton Tax District Commission, Mark Chandler to the Donaldson Fire Service Area, William Stewart and Monique Nikki Williams to the Greater Greenville Sanitation District, Valerie Arnold and Lindsay Strand to the Historic Preservation Commission, Dexter Reeve and Rachel Rice to the Human Relations Commission, which will also be open for a period of two weeks. Olga Linsky to the Lake Forest Special Tax District, Teresa Aldrick, Caleb Freeman, Gary Schultz to the Metropolitan Sewer Subdistricts, sorry about that, and then Natasha Sexton and Judy Wilson to the Museum Commission, Pauline Brown to the Old Mill Estates Tax District Commission. For the Redevelopment Authority, Dean Dolittle, James Hammond, John Asserci Reese, and Alan White, William Dempsey to the Terrapines Estates Special Tax District, and James Beckham, Paul Hambrus, William Byrne-Mebbin, and Joseph Nixon to Thrive Upstate.
All right, let's vote on that one real quick. All those in favor of the adoption of Board of Commission appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item A two.
On behalf of the Committee, I move to authorize the County Attorney to settle the following lawsuit according to the terms discussed in executive session. Case number 2024 CP 2300893.
All right, all those in favor of adoption of the report on settlement of the Civil Action Number 2024 CP 2300893, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Do we need to formally have a motion on reopening those, or is her report good enough to suffice? We were going to reopen the Board of Tax Assessment Appeals and...
Relations, I read them as part of the report, but I'm happy to make a formal motion.
Let's make a formal motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion coming out of committee to reopen the Board of Tax Assessment Appeals and the Human Relations Commission for two weeks.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Administrators report. You sure? All right, appreciate everybody's hard work tonight. Thank you, everybody in the crowd that came and spoke and listened, and there being no further business, I'll move for...
Move for adjourned.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. We are adjourned.